I call this meeting Saint John City Council's orders, September 17th, 2019, 7:00 PM. Additions to the agenda, we have an executive session, five minute executive session pursuant to the non-elected personnel matters. Any other additions? Can I get a motion on that?
So move.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Okay. Citizens comments. You have any citizens comments this evening?
Just going to be over.
Consent agenda, approved minutes, regular council meeting, September 3rd, 2019, and special council meeting, September 5th, 2019. Can I get a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Appropriation ordinance, number 9-17-19, in the amount of $39,043.79, and petty cash of $482.14. Can I get a ... We have a motion. We have a second.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
You'll get into your question.
Yeah. I'm still ...
I, all right.
I have the abstain.
Okay, I've got two abstains here, and I've got one vote. Okay, two.
Vote yes.
So, motion carries. Okay, next on the agenda, Ransom Financial Group, LLC, Larry Kleeman?
Yes. How do you do? Yeah. Yeah. All right. Keep on. Larry Kleeman, Ransom Financial Group, we're consulting to local governments around the state, over the bond financing, and we do you guys the city code as well, so remember things. I was talking to Jamie about your electric generator, what option is to bond finance that, and so just going to go over some details, if you're ready to proceed, we can do that too. I'll just look through my handout here, and I'll ... Top of the, each page is a red number, just so you kind of keep up with me, because they're too fast. Page one, that just kind of outlines where your current status is as far as debt, and I think you have some loans out there and some leases, but you really, I think your general obligation bond is being paid off maybe already last year, so I think you really have no general debt. So, just FYI here, to calculate your debt capacity, state law limits you at 30% for your principal and debit valuation, so that includes your motor vehicle valuation, so you multiply 30% times 7 million, of course, 79,000. Gives you a debt limit of 2,243, again, we're talking like $750,000, so really you have plenty of debt capacity to go ahead and issue general obligation bonds. In the box down toward the middle there, I outline what current market interest rates are. Rates have been coming down lately, so it's a good time to issue bonds, but depending on how long, for what timeframe, you want to issue the bond, that of course determines your annual payment. For example, I highlighted in yellow there, the 20-year GO bond. Average interest rate, these are a little conservative, maybe on the high side, actual rates might be lower. Average interest rate for 20 years would be about below 3%, which would be about a $51,000 annual payment. If you want to know how that converts into a mill levy, if that's how you work to pay for it, I have those numbers there as well. And of course, the numbers vary based on if you do 10 years, interest rate might be a little better, but of course your annual payment is going to be higher, as you can see there, $87,000 is the estimate. And just so you know, as financial advisor, we help you guys take bids for various things and underwriters, and we'd come back the next, at the next meeting and present the best bid to you, and show you all the bids, so you get the best interest rate, best market rate out there. That's how we operate as a financial advisor. Just giving off to the page two, this just highlights various ways you could finance this. General obligation bonds is one, utility revenue bonds, lease purchase is another. The other two, revenue bonds, lease purchase, might be a slightly higher interest rate. In your case, there's really no reason to go for the best rate general obligation bond, since you don't have any out there, you have the capacity to do so, so I think it would be a good idea to issue general obligation bonds in this instance. Page three highlights costs. In addition to financing the generator, for 22,500, there are costs of issuing the bonds, which are detailed down below. Byline items, financial advisor, who's a bond attorney, Gilmore and Bell, and there are a few other fees involved. So the total estimated bond amount would be about $760,000. Now, those numbers on page one were based off of the $760,000 amount. The next page, page four, that just kind of elaborates on what, how your debt service would go. For example, this is for a 20-year bond, typically municipal bonds are paid annually or amount, twice a year, a smaller interest payment, usually in the spring, and then a larger principal plus interest payment in the fall. And then, the total amount, is off to the far right each year that you have the budget for, so roughly $50,000 for a 20-year bond. And again, these are just estimated interest rates, they may be lower, I try to be a little conservative here. Looking over to page six, this is a simple calendar, tonight, September 17th, if you'd want to proceed, there are two resolutions you could approve. One is to authorize the project, that says you're going to bond finance that bar money to, to purchase the generator. That operates, you go ahead and start making payments or spending money, so you won't be a violation of the cash basis law. And then a second, so, a second resolution, is a bond sub-resolution, which authorizes, as is, am I in your seat?
Yep.
So, second resolution, the sub-resolution, authorizes us to go bring back bids, and you're meeting in about one month, and then you could officially approve bond documents at next month's meeting, which according to this draft calendar here, October 15th. So, assuming you do the two resolutions tonight, then bond counsel and us as financial advisor would bear documents, solicit bids from various makes and underwriters, and I'd come back here, October 15th, with the bids to show you, and the documents to officially approve about the ordinance, or the bonds, with both the ordinance and resolution at that time. And then typically, the money is available to be wired to you guys two weeks later. Page seven, that is the resolution authorizing the project. Pages eight and nine is the meat of the resolution, authorizing us to conduct a sale on your behalf. There are a few other pages, there are dependencies to the sub-resolution, I didn't include it, I'm just trying to include the meat of the documents in this document, in this handout. Page 10 through 12, that's just disclosures required by us under federal law, just saying that as a financial advisor, we're supposed to put your interests before ours under federal law, or else we could be sanctioned by the federal government. There have been no complaints against us, and if you want to complain, there's an address in here that you can do so. So, that's just a standard disclosure we're supposed to make. So, I think I've sped through that pretty quickly. If you guys have any questions on the numbers, I can go over that in more detail, if you want to proceed. Again, there are two resolutions you can adopt tonight, to move forward, or if you're in a no hurry, I mean, yeah, you can go free to wait, I don't know how quickly this project's moving along, but if you want to move forward as quick as possible, we could do those two resolutions tonight, I'd come back here next month with bonds.
Council, have any questions?
What are your fees? It says in page 10, you have ...
Yeah, actually, they're spelled out on page ...
Three.
Three, okay. So the bottom, bottom part here, we're, Ransom Financial is the financial advisor, bond counsel would be Gilmore and Bell, they probably do 9% of the bond in the state. Then there are a few other fees, preparing an official statement, that would also be ours. Sometimes bond counsel does it, but I think we would do that in this case. Attorney general typically reviews, the transfer of the bond, council puts together, so they charge a fee. Finally, state treasurer charges a fee, all municipal bonds, virtually all general obligation bonds are registered to state treasurer, so they know to send a bill to Jamie whenever a bill is due, and then she can pay the state treasurer, that then pays the bond holders, so. I don't want to go right through all that.
No. So, does anybody else ... We're kind of in eight stages, I guess, I would say.
Sure, yeah.
So, if you're cycling forward on this, with the addition of that ...
Yeah.
I think, when is, is he scheduled for the first meeting in October to be here?
Yes.
Greg?
Greg will be here at the next meeting.
The next meeting.
Just contact me if we can help out.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you for the numbers.
You bet.
Thank you for the paperwork.
So, is there anything else you need from me?
Don't think there's any.
If they come up with any questions, they'll just have them contact me, and I can give them to you.
Sounds good.
Great.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Okay, moving on, department heads, committee reports, I mean, heard any hint from the department minister, what's your form on?
Lisa continues to get ahold of the people at the state, and she is almost feeling like we got put on the back burner, because she isn't getting anywhere, so she's, I think she was going to call the end of last week, but she hasn't got a better update since this has been, so we're still waiting.
Got ahold of her?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Police chief?
Hey.
Got this, okay. Fire chief, Michael's not here.
We just need to remove Jacob Whitaker and Jared Taylor off of the fire department.
Okay. Can I get a motion on that?
So move.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. All right, Jamie, city administrator.
So, in the last newsletter, we put out a little blurb, just letting people know that we have and will be going around to check junk in people's yards, I guess we'll say. I found the ordinance that I had been trying to find forever, I kept getting hung up on an ordinance, and I did finally find the one that I was looking for specifically. I get calls all the time about washers, dryers, fridges, freezer, like appliances out, and it's just become more of a pattern of allowing junk to be piled up outside people's houses, so we sent that in the newsletter, my plan was to do that, and then just kind of let you guys know what I'm doing, because I'm not picking and choosing, like, I've gone down every street, every alley, I'm going to have to do it again, because my picture's all going to turn out, but, I mean, it's going to be a bulk, hey, we're laying this up, so, before I made people angry, I wanted to let you guys know what I was doing, and to probably expect phone calls, so, there's that. And I'm also with that, sending the letters of what, of what I know of the vacant homes, just a letter stating, hey, we're working on this, what can we do, where can we meet at to, to get some of these houses cleaned up, so. There's a few we've had conversations with, just letting them know different options as they've come in here, a couple people are having to move because of the conditions of some homes, so we make sure to, try to mention that as we can, so, but, yeah, you guys might be getting phone calls.
Are you enforcing, is there fines?
So, with, like, the junk outside people's houses, yes. With the friendly letter, I was going to start with a friendly letter stating that we were working on this project, the house, the shape, the condition of your house is, is poor, what can we do?
Is that something you're doing, just, you writing a letter, or is John getting involved in this?
This is the first time we've had.
Well, I've been talking about that letter for a long time.
I just didn't want John to be writing these letters, and it cost us quite a bit, because you're sending out a lot of them.
I think the ordinance said.
The ord, the, the one for the junk.
I think she probably had a form letter.
Yeah, it's, it's already, like, typed up, and I just have to go in and change.
I guess my question is, how much can you fine somebody for this? 25 or whatever?
Well, basically, they have a time limit to abate the situation, and if they don't do it, then the city has the right to go and do it, and they can charge, but then it, I think it goes to municipal court.
And you could do, you could do it both, or you could do it at the same time, you could go kind of like two parallel, parallel routes here, file something in the municipal court, but it just, so something like that's probably caused, it makes, and, you know, somebody gets fined, and the court gives them time to clean up, and they don't do it, and are stuck collecting fines on the back square block. If this, if it works, and the city doesn't have to do anything further, that's probably the cheapest way, if she can write a letter, then, you know, more than, the next step is in case of municipal court, that's all, that's all.
And if they don't pay the fines, it goes to the property, so it'll have to be paid when they pay the property tax. Am I correct?
No, the municipal court will fine.
If we have to go in, if we go in and clean it up, then we can assess it to the property.
We can assess it. Okay.
And it's chapter eight, article two, under health nuisances, 201 talks about, like, I mean, it's great wording on, just.
1986 wording.
You know, I'm, I'm not even opposed to just the word, I mean, filth, excrement, lumber, lumberyard, rocks, dirt, cans, I mean, it covers everything, so, but I knew somewhere I had read, like, ice boxes and refrigerators, and I kept getting hung up on a different part of the health and welfare code, and so when I finally found that, I ...
I mean, it's ruined Jamie anything that's undecided.
Yeah. So.
Can you read that chapter again?
Chapter eight.
You did it through my back alley also, didn't you?
No. Like I said, I ...
Maybe the letter don't get half.
Do what?
If it's a letter, you're on half, I would say that'd be a pretty, pretty realistic.
Yeah, and I mean, there, I mean, there are several houses that ...
Pretty scary, you start going through your back alley.
I mean, I can think of two or three, but it's, I mean, it's probably going to create more of a headache just sending the letter, but, I mean, those houses need, need it the most.
Max, only penalty of $100. It's kind of one, I mean, I've always said of these things, that it's better to do all these at once, and kind of deal with them at once, than just kind of, you know, so, so maybe the letter goes out, and then you reassess 30 days on the road, and then whoever did clean up their mess, then you allow, I guess, one more case at all at once, but it makes it more and more.
Yeah, and like I said, I mean, I got a couple complaints here, and a couple complaints there, and I'm, I mean, it's going to be part of getting the town cleaned up, so I figured I'd do it all at once, and we're working on all the other house situations, so I figured I would add this into it.
Chief's way.
Yeah.
Just take care of it all at once.
Anything else, Jamie?
Yes. So, before, with the, I mean, it's not going to be a huge difference with what we have with Scott, but we have a new business owner in town with a wrecking service, and I feel like it would be a good idea to try to get an agreement with Marshall, with junk vehicles, and we can continue to leave off where we were when Adam and Scott were, I think it was like $75 a car, title in hand. I'm not for sure how Adam did that, because there's nothing left of the, like, we don't know who he sent it to, or where he was at on anything, but I feel like if that is an option, then we can also do a cleanup of that, with, with having a fence and all of that in town again. I don't know if you're set up and ready, but, and I don't know the proper way to go about all of that, but.
Well, it's, the biggest thing on those, on those vehicles is, you got to have title, and so if they don't, we don't have title, somebody's going to have to figure out title. I think that that was one of the deals, is Scott would want to take it and do something with it if they had title. Unless it's.
Legally, to get rid of one, you have to have a title.
So we need to have like a title workshop day, where we can find volunteers to help these people get titles?
It may not even be that, I mean, maybe more difficult, you know, if, if title can't be found or determined, we'd have to do some kind of talk about title after. I mean, I've got clients that would go to auctions and buy vehicles and equipment without title, and then go through the process of getting title, knowing that they're going to have to hire an attorney to do it, but they get the vehicles, and they're going to buy cheaper, or they don't come to the title. A lot of oil would feel important.
Okay. So maybe tackle that later.
Yeah, I can't remember, he had a letter or something, and I don't think I've heard that he sent it, but I think he may have done it.
Well, he couldn't find anything when, and now we really can't find anything, so, it'd be starting from scratch, but I figure why we're on the housing thing, junk vehicles in yards are also a complaint that gets.
And it may be that what you have to do there is, if they are harboring, or they are in possession of that junk vehicle, you may just have to file that in municipal court to cause them to kind of get off their seats, and then figure out the title situation.
Anything else, Jamie? Anybody have any questions for Jamie? Maybe we don't have the city superintendent to get anything from Jeff.
Did you want to talk about the nurse?
Oh, yeah, we can. Shannon is our city health nurse, and I'm not sure if there was, I'm not sure how the county health nurse became the city health nurse, or what kind of agreement was ever made, but with all of the complaints and work that she's probably about to get started on, and already, like, we have it, the, the issue now that she's been doing work for us, John and I talked about maybe being able to make that a paid position, so she can get compensated for the work that she's been doing.
She might be a little more responsive. Okay. She's, right now, she, and I don't know if there's some kind of agreement over the county, that we just use their person, but apparently she's not getting paid.
So, we just wanted to, to bring that up, I mean.
She's not getting paid for what she's handling city business?
She is, the city appointed health officer, and she's not receiving any kind of compensation.
But do you use her, I guess, something like, how often?
This is the first case we've had, matter of fact, I've, I've never met her, this is the first case we've had in a while.
I've seen Doris used to do it all too.
Well, Chelsea, I think, did the last round that we did, but she's also.
And I don't think she's ever been this paid either.
No. Doris kind of took, I mean, she, she took her own initiative, she, she would come to the city with things, with Chelsea, it kind of worked the other way.
Yeah.
And then Doris came back for a little bit.
So Shannon, like, she told me today, when I was talking to her, like, she had two full weeks, and she doesn't know if it got stirred up from tax sale, or what was going on, but just two full weeks of complaints about properties, so then, because that's part of the process, and someone doesn't like, and they think it's a health violation, then they go to complain to her, and she files the report, and brings it to us, and then we can move forward on it.
She's doing that during the day?
Yeah, or at, like, or after.
I guess I've visited commissioners before, if she's doing our.
I, I don't, I don't.
I'd like to find out what the deal is with that first, before we go any further.
I don't know what, what it's ever been, I mean, like, Dor, I don't know if, did Chelsea work for the county? Okay, and Doris did also.
I'm not certain why the county health department nurse would not still have overlapping duties within the city, that seems to be.
Right.
It just goes to one of those, I mean, it's just like.
It's a generalist agreement.
Well, no, it's just like the court system, they have overlapping, and, and he refused to file any municipal court, or any missing cases, so it's just, it's just the same thing.
He didn't have any skin in the city, she's got some skin in the town.
He has skin, yeah, absolutely. He could have handled all of his court cases, that's how it was.
But he didn't, he's not a resident.
No, you're right, he's not a resident.
She's, she's part of the community, and I think she may have some incentive to help clean it up.
And she, I mean, she definitely wants to, I don't want you guys to take it that she's not doing, but we just.
I know when I sat in on the commissioner meeting, when she talked about it, she's just basically been overwhelmed by all the complaints, and she doesn't have enough hours in the day to do her normal work, and then take care of every single one of them.
Correct.
On the county.
Could be overwhelming.
Well, and, oh, it is overwhelming. But, just like, the current case we're working on, you know, she'll come, she'll come to municipal court afterward, or she'll go, if she needs to meet at that house, to, you know, so, it's just something that we were talking about, because.
But you're saying, you're saying she's overwhelmed, I mean, even if we did compensate pay her some money, you're saying she basically sets it up.
But I think some of the, some of the problems were, were not, everything was a health hazard that was being brought to her, a lot of it was maybe just a dilapidated building, or someone, you know, nothing that really related to what you guys are dealing with on First Street.
Yeah, I mean, my, my issue is simply, if I'm, if I'm doing the work, and I'm ready to go and I get something done, you know, and the city's not the one paying the bill, she's going to go, you know, she's got other work, what she's going to do, she's going to do it first, then, and I have to wait, and things get stale, and I have to circle that around, and in a sense, it's wasting the time that you're paying me to deal with an issue, because then I've got to, you know, we had, we had the issue at this time, where I didn't have all the pieces, and now I have all the pieces, but it's a long way. I, I guess I just want to check into the agreement, or how that's handled there, and I'd like to visit the commissioners before I say.
I can ask them tomorrow morning.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, I can.
I'll be there.
I can make these calls myself.
I'll be able to meet with them anyway.
Yeah. I mean, she hasn't done anything wrong, don't get me.
Right.
No, absolutely, if we're, the city's not paying for it. I mean, I just.
You're promoting it.
No, that's, yeah.
But just even that, like, if it's, if she has X amount of, like, 95 or whatever, if we're paying her, she could use time maybe at work.
Structural issues would be, be beyond her expertise.
Right.
Some structural issues, that's not a health issue, I mean, it ain't to help.
And that's some of the stuff that she brought up to the commissioners at that one meeting a couple days ago.
Okay, so, someplace you need somebody that's capable of, you know, even those structural complications.
Some of these issues are so, I mean, there's so many issues with some of these houses that I, I don't consider them structural issues, I can work inside with the other issues, but you're right, and it's structural, we had that problem with, with the church in town, and I think we visited one of the engineers in town, and they were like $1,400 for the telescope, structural issues, they're all, that, yeah, I mean, I, I'm not going to hang my hat out on the kind of structural issues, my thing is, if, if we need to move quickly on something, I just want someone here to move quickly on it.
And the structural issues, is either going to be an engineer, or an inspector or something, and then that means, you know, if we hire someone like that to take care of the issues, they're also going to need to be there when people are building, or working on new projects, you know, it's, it's a two-way street there, we can't just have it for what we want to have, it would be, you know, it'd be a two-way street, they wouldn't be able to just come in and take care of the issues and turn an eye if someone wanted to build something, then, so, yes.
Okay.
You're going to check in with the commission?
I'll talk to them tomorrow, because I'm sure. I'll talk to them tomorrow if I'm sure. I'll ask you guys to call them.
Anybody have any other questions for Jamie? All right, moving on to city superintendent. Do you have, do we have anything from Jeff?
No, he's sick.
Okay, public utility supervisor Jason. All right, public utility work, public work supervisor David. Okay, all right, John?
Um, I don't.
Anybody have any questions for John? We're going on to old business, West Street.
I mean, the buildings that we had, there's not enough to do it. We're not gonna do half. We can't do the whole thing in one chunk. I don't think it's, it'll do any good if we just put just a little dab on there. I have enough to finish it. I would say, you know, if we can start out milling next year, whatever happens, I'll venture whoever Jeff's talking to. When we do get a lot, you know, it'll be next year. But I mean, right now, I I don't know what else you guys wanna wanna do or try.
Are we gonna get that ditch cut on the south side of the tracks for winter?
Ross, what do you think? I mean, that's helped that road a bunch of.
Oh, yeah, it's the best it's ever been for ever.
In my memory.
Yeah, that's right. I was gonna say twenty years. To get the south side cut and raise it up, it's a point of no connect that page.
And maybe we can take the milling, the little bit we have.
Put on the south.
South side. You know, we have enough for that. All four of it. What's more about straight approach, kinda what we did the other side, north side.
Have we, have they, did you guys get the West Street sealed yet, the Northwest Street? The sand, aren't we gonna sand that or oil it?
I think just oil it, right?
Oil it?
I haven't had, I mean, I really haven't talked to Phil. They were supposed to fog it.
I think they did.
I don't know. I haven't talked to him. I don't know. I don't know.
I was just curious.
But there, I don't think they're letting sand it.
No, I knew. I knew they were doing something different. They weren't doing that chat. They were gonna do it next year. First Street looks good.
Yeah, I think it looks a lot better.
Keep roaming it up.
Yeah.
Letting truck, corn trucks keep ironing it in. Looks real good.
What about Nutty and West on First Street? I mean, is there a reason they stopped there?
I, my thoughts were they were doing, I wasn't there that day or here. My thoughts were they were doing all first. So I wasn't sure why they stopped at that yet. I don't know if next year, if they're gonna turn and run down West Street, all kind of wonderful pass there. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I just figured they'd do all West Street. They ran a block.
Oh, all of West Street.
For First Street, sorry.
That's what I figured they would do. Bill and Pete were out measuring and they, Steven said they measured from that dip at Nutty. Sent to the court. Then they went south on, is that Exchange? I don't know. I thought they were doing the whole whole First Street, clear to West Street until in Kirby's. Is what I thought they were doing. But I didn't, Jeff talked to Phil, you know, set up all that.
Is it because of that we didn't redo?
We milled, we milled up the sides between Nutty and West.
You haven't done any.
Last year?
They stopped it last year. They stopped it.
Maybe that's the reason. I was thinking they went off of Midwest Street.
Yeah, it's, I mean, for our machine, it's way too hard. We can't cut. And I was, I remember if I was on vacation, these Jason and Steven called and said, it's almost flush with the floor line anyway. So why cut it? But I still thought they would have done that little section while they were dealing. I'm gonna, as soon as I get, maybe tomorrow, some time, I'm gonna talk to Phil and see. I thought they were.
Jeff mentioned in the meeting how far it was going last last time. And I don't recall what it was. I don't know if it's in the minutes or not, but he did say where he was beginning and ending in in his plan.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking that we.
It seems like it's a nice place to stop. But I went, I did take notes and. Now for, but Jeff did say where he was starting and stopping. But I don't recall what it was.
So I mean, they had enough oil that they could exchange with, that they could have done that if that was the case. You know, shot that, so changed that, so I don't know until I talk to Phil.
You gonna get West Street continued on that agenda?
No, as long as we get that south ditch cut or where they fogged it, I think West Street's off the books till next year, isn't it?
Gotta leave it on till they get the ditch cut.
Doesn't matter.
That's I mean, that's the average. I mean, I propose to have like everything basically on there until it's a hundred percent done.
Any more discussion on West? Okay, moving on to Fountain.
Still waiting on a tweak here. I keep getting asked when we're gonna have like.
Excited about it.
I know. We've we've kind of talked about waiting until Jubilee next year to to add that. 'Cause I mean, by the time we get everything put back together, we're gonna fill it and then have to drain it every winter. So we've talked about just waiting until next year. If everyone's on board with that, we're still kind of discussing. And then I have a great idea for Christmas, so just hold your, hold your seats.
What if, what if the person that donated the money for that fountain, are they wanting, are okay with a plaque or not?
Yeah, I have all that.
Guess where we're at? We saved the money for the fountain. And with doing the whole fountain, it really damaged the sidewalk. I'm sure you guys noticed. I think we need to look into getting a bid to at least do that sidewalk. Depending on what it costs, maybe all four. I just think we definitely need to do something with this one. Have you seen it? Is it something you guys wanna get bids on?
I wanna throw us, is that somewhat contractor liability?
I don't know that that was broke from Mansells.
There was some previous people working on it, they're telling.
Previous tenant's done.
And how would, should we set that out with how much I found the waste? I have no sense of it.
There's no sense, okay.
Till it's, till it's done, until I found.
I agree with you.
Wait, so we don't have to do it again. Or we can just break it out. It's only four inch over. I'm afraid it's gonna happen again.
But you're saying to wait till the the whole fountain's done in the.
I I would, I'm gonna say you're gonna break it out again.
Oh, yeah.
You're gonna be in there with the sketchy or something.
Right, I have to pour it again. So if we can get the fountain set, get that weight off there, pour it, I would, so we're not back in there.
Should we get bids now and let them, whoever puts in the bids, let them know that it'd probably be a spring deal? So we at least know what it's gonna cost and maybe make the plan now.
And it's still gonna be the same.
What, I tell them, I mean, for me, they don't change. I've always turned the same. I just, I wanna know what it's gonna cost to do, whether it's one piece or all four. I just think with the thirty thousand that we put aside to do that, I think it's just a good time to just fix the square of the sidewalks fountain. It's gonna look really sharp. So that's my my vision only.
I don't wanna take away from making it look better 'cause I'm all for that, but we also didn't plan for a thirty thousand dollar expense. Like, this worked out to where it's in our favor.
I would say, you know, it did, I would agree with you. Say, it does look pretty bad, just all the weight and the sweet stairs going in and out, which on the edges of it, just bumping it up, crack it all down.
Well, that one spot.
That's the best sidewalk that's in there. I'd say everybody, everybody look, yeah, see what you can.
I don't think it would hurt to get some quotes on that and just let them know that it'll be something that happening in the springtime. That way we have an idea of how much it's going to cost and we plan for it.
You guys agree with that?
I don't know how you can expect it to hold until spring.
That's 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 the thing right there.
It's two hundred feet of concrete sidewalk. I believe they could pour it for less than thirty grand.
Does the price of that stuff go up?
But it costs now or it costs after the first of the year, what's the difference?
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, if you had a bid now or bid in January or February, what's the difference?
Get the bid when you're ready to do it.
That's what I think. Start maybe after the first of the year, get the bids on it.
What do you, when's the plan to set the fountain?
We haven't finished discussing.
Okay, all right.
So what's council thinking? You wanna hold off until around the first of the year and we start looking for bids on that? Or do you wanna sort of.
Or after the fountain's set, you know, says that's done, then you can put the bids out.
I think they're, they'll still be working on it in October because it had to sit until the end of September, right?
Man, they poured some in all last winter.
They poured some in all winter, so.
Yeah, I just finished up what we're doing and then it's. Yeah, I think that'll be best peanuts.
Okay, so we'll just leave it on here. We're too determined on that. Okay, moving on to truck parking.
So Ryan brought me the contract. And the lease was actually up last month. So. The only bad thing is we don't have any measurements from Jeff on, Jason, did you measure with Jeff on the truck parking out at the industrial? So like I, I mean, I don't know if he's interested still in, I mean, I would assume he would still want, if it's not, I assume our truck parking's not gonna be that whole block, so if we could.
I hope not.
If we could re. Recalculate like the agreement, I guess, on how much would be left and available for him to farm, then.
Is Raymond still interested in renewing an agreement with us?
Yeah, yeah. He said he was fine with it. You know, if you chop it down a little bit, you know, maybe change a bit. Just a little bit. I mean, that's kind of pain.
It's on a per acre basis anyways.
Forty-eight dollars. Is that per year?
That's.
I think so.
Well, it doesn't spell it out. It says seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty cents, and the lease is for five years.
Yeah.
This was.
It's what Pam ever.
So I don't know if he paid that yearly or. It never says anything in there yearly or.
I'm pretty sure it is 'cause I I remember Pam saying he comes in here and he'd pay it, but I did not.
I think the agreement needs a little work to itself as well.
Add that twenty-eight dollars agreement.
What is, that's what.
I would say the land is well rented.
Yeah, that's right.
Is that worth more than what it should be? I wanna be fair to the guy. I mean.
We need to just measure that.
Maybe back in twenty fourteen, it was, it was worth more.
Yeah, definitely.
It's gone up. I know it's gone up from two thousand and twelve.
Yeah, but I think it's awesome. I think ground.
If he wants to work with us and we can take part of that back, like Jeff, I'm willing to negotiate that rent down in his favor, in my favor.
I would say thirty, thirty-five would be top rent for what it's worth if it was good land and I would. Ten acres, it's not even worth doing.
Here's the thing, you're not gonna find a lot of people that wanna mess with ten acres.
I know.
And that's ten acres less we have to mow and maintain.
Exactly.
So I think we just need a really good agreement to let him continue to farm it if he wants to.
Exactly.
And if we take four acres out of it or, you know, square it up so that it doesn't.
Correct. We need to set up and all go out there with Jeff and get a agreement or whatever.
I think we do.
Do you have any, I mean, you're the guy to ask, how many acres do you think you're gonna need? I mean, because we don't even know how many trucks.
Square or rectangle. We just need to go out there and look at how it's gonna be entrance and exit points, in fact, and great. If it's if it's one entrance and one exit, you need twice as much space. If you have an entrance and an exit, you can do it in half as much.
I guess when we're talking about that, as far as what do we need to do so that us as a council can all go and inspect the properties that we purchased? Go out there and look at all that stuff? I mean, can we have a special meeting to do that?
Yeah, I mean, you just get one here and then reconvene at the spot.
You can even do it.
Get one there.
Well, yeah, I know we could do a regular meeting, but we probably don't need to just do it at like daylight hours instead of seven o'clock at night when we're trying to run around in the dark and look at everything.
Yeah, just like, just like we did when we went to skating rink. You just restart the meeting over there. That way everybody can talk. Anybody's welcome. And it just needs to be on the, it's on the agenda where you're going.
But I don't know. Maybe that's something we need to do is just like a special meeting. So that is the only thing we're doing is.
Look, see.
Looking at our houses on West Second, the one over on First, and go out, everybody can.
Of course, that's, would that be a land bank? You'd probably have to go in the land bank and then you could go out of land bank.
We'd still have people.
You go over the lawn.
Can you draw out a, a agenda for a roadmap of how we're gonna do that? Then we can set a date.
I think that's something we probably need to do so we can kind of put our eyes on it, look at it.
You wanna pick a date now, so?
Uh, no, not really.
Email us how big it is and how much time it's gonna take, and that'll affect it.
Just get a, just get a problem going.
We don't have access to the houses.
No, we don't have to.
We will shortly though, I think. I think they're actually supposed to come in quicker than what they said.
I think it's probably my fault. Why email me and said, do you approve this order? But you didn't email me again.
I'll get your email, so.
So Jamie makes the, makes the map, the agenda, and then at the next meeting, we can decide a date?
Yeah, right.
We'll be a little closer to being done with farmers probably by the end of the, we could probably set one in the future that might work a little better for everybody. May have to meet a little earlier too.
Yeah.
Yeah, just do daylight hours.
I meant to drive by the farm around the day, love to see what kind of conditions they have, you know, whether.
I didn't. There's just.
I mean, are we, you know, if he gets part of the plan, we, you know, just wait till next week and decide that.
Well, when would he need to plant something? October, October, city government's on.
Here's the thing, it states in the contract we have, I guess if it is planted, we take it, we can just reimburse it.
Yeah. It's a contractual.
He's actually not under contract right now. I mean, technically, he can't plant it until he agreed with it, like. Cash rate agreement, that's the reason it's in the post.
Thirty-one October is the last date you can plant weeds.
We got a little time, but it needs to happen. Coordinate that with Jeff. Matt, that out, email that out.
I'm not hurrying Jeff back to work though.
Okay, right. Any more discussion on that? Okay, moving on to your next thing, the street signs.
They are ordered. I had a little trouble. They were, sent me over to approve it. It was where the logo was, lettering was where our holes were, we, you know, held on. I didn't want that covered up or messing up the logo or lettering, so they fixed that. Last week I sent it back off. They said they were gonna put the middle in, so. She didn't say roughly how long it took to print all the signs, do all that. I gotta email her back. She sent me in the middle of the day and I didn't, I didn't get her return. But I'll see kind of the timeframe and where we're looking.
Anybody have any questions on that? All right, moving on. Which center repairs?
Okay, I have one that got returned. And I didn't send it out in the packet because I wanted to make sure that you guys didn't want me to reach out to more before I gave you this one, just to kind of keep it fair. But I did reach out to three and I only got one returned, so. I have that if you like.
Or the other two just delayed and they're still gonna do it, or they're just not.
Well, mine's one of them, I see, right? I'm hooked up. It's like the next four or five months, so that's why I haven't got one. So you guys wanna opt for that, then I can put a bid in, but I'm hooked up to Bob, Jamie, right?
And the other one was supposed to come back and measure and I haven't heard from them. I didn't chase them.
I guess you can check with him, but we, you're gonna copy everybody. You wanna email it later?
I can do that.
That'd be good.
I just wanted to make sure. I just didn't, I didn't want out there, I guess, until you guys knew if I should get more or. Since we did the three bid process.
I'd still like to see at least a couple. I'd still like to see at least a couple.
Yeah, reach out to the one, see if he's, you know, if you're going or not. And then if he's not, then you can reach out to the one, I guess.
Did you, you reached out to local, I guess, just to everybody here in the county you can think of, I guess?
No, I've reached out to three. Not every...
Well, I mean, the biggest thing is, I've told you guys, just get bids locally in the county, and then we'll go out. If we can't get enough bids, then go out and tell them, but, or, Carol Free, yeah.
Yeah, Carol Free, so.
I'll put, I'll put my bid in, I guess the next meeting I'll have mine, but I, just being upfront, I can't do anything until Maggie, anyway.
Just put it up there.
Okay, now the discussion. Moving on, the WSC strategic plan.
Well, how'd you like that? I think that she...
I liked everything till the last page.
Yeah. So, and I think that she said that we could break it down, like, we wouldn't necessarily have to get, go with everything. But she said that, so I've reached out to a few... Strategic plans are a hot topic right now in my clerk list serve, so I've been trying to follow, and I've reached out to a few, a few other clerks, um, just to kind of see what they do. I know another town, they do kind of a yearly strategic plan. And I thought that was a good idea, so I was going to get it, get on board with that and try to figure something out, but then I had to call Melissa about the donation, and I was just kind of running it by her. And she doesn't suggest a yearly strategic plan, just because that's still... It's still just reacting, it's not... It's still reacting to the problems, like, it doesn't give enough time to, to plan stuff out, so. I mean, I talked with her kind of on how to get everything started, but, um, and like I said, I've reached out to a few more clerks on, on what they do and, and the process, just because I saw that, that dollar amount, and it, it scared me. So I'm trying to get more, more options on how to go about that, but... I mean, I guess I won't turn it down till you guys turn it down, but...
It's more than I was expecting. It was probably a fair way I'll say that.
Yes.
Might, might be double than what I was expecting, or at least for sure more than I was expecting.
And I assume that I, I assume that there's other companies I could probably reach out to. I'm on the board for the Center for Counseling Group, then, and they use that same company that we did for, um, that van, is it van D R Plus? That we did for like the employee audit and the HR stuff. They almost did like a rebranding, like, they went through everything and developed their vision plan and, and just did this awesome rebirthing kind of of the company, and, and that was really neat to see. Just the positivity behind that as well, but that might be more than what we're, we're looking for, too, I don't...
Schemata, with our three million dollar budget annually, if you amortize that out, go for a four or five year period of time, and the project works, it's not a lot of money.
I was thinking the same thing, the millions of dollars we're looking at.
If you get a piece of paper and you don't have anything with it, but that worked, it's a lot. But we've got three million dollar budget, and you amortize that over, say, a five year time, it's not a lot, you're talking here. Three thousand dollars a year.
But my, my scare on that is, they, the city has tried, like, I just don't want to spend twenty thousand dollars on a strategic plan, and then council changes, and council doesn't want to follow it anymore.
Exactly.
Five year plan, they're redoing it.
But I think, and that was the other thing reading through there, I thought that if they only worked on the three year plan. Well, we can't, we can't afford to do what we need to do in three years.
You know, we're probably a ten, closer to a ten year plan.
And the other thing that I've seen is, we don't really have figures of what it would cost right now to fix any of our stuff.
Right.
I mean, we have not had...
That doesn't come with, when you pay for that strategic plan, I guess?
I don't think they're probably going to call someone in to inspect our sewer system, and our water system, and our streets and gutters, and our infrastructure. And so we have all that planned for before you can actually put a plan in place to give yourself a ten year goal. And if you don't know what you're dealing with upfront...
Right.
Money wise, I don't think there's any way you can spend eighteen thousand dollars for them to come in here and say, "Well, this is what we think you need to do."
The streets need fixed.
Yeah. Do we have half a million dollars in sewer repairs, do we have two million dollars in sewer repairs? We don't know. I mean, it's hard to do.
And that's part of what Melissa and I were talking about was, and I have, I plan on getting ahold of like David and Jason with, you know, I've talked to David a lot about our, our equipment, and I mean, it's getting older, we're going to have to start replacing it, and it's just even things like that that we'd like to see a plan in place, so we're getting these things figured out before it's, oh, we're using it, and, oh crap, it's not working anymore. Like, just plans like that, I mean, it's, it's always like we're reacting to...
Boots up the bad ones.
There's been no plan for forty years, and it's going to blow up, and now we're trying to fix it. But twenty thousand dollars just doesn't seem... But I, I mean, I understand the over time, but that also means if we went for it today, we'd have two council changes in that, and that scares me. Not saying that council doesn't do a great job, but, I mean, count, I mean, opinions change, and, and... Yeah, so, I mean, even, even if those are the major needs of the community, those might not be someone else's opinion, like, you know, they might want flower pots on each corner. I know that's drastic, but...
Is it something you guys want more companies to look at? Because then that's more bids for us.
I don't know, I don't know, it's, I think it's just an idea. I don't think we need...
Because they're all going to be around that much of that.
I'm sure they are, but I'm still at the point that we don't really have a starting spot on what we need to do. We don't have a dollar figure. And I think at some point, we need to figure out what it's going, before you can set a plan to replace this stuff, you're going to have to know what it's going to cost you to replace that stuff and do the work. Now, I know in ten years it'll change.
I don't know what we're bidding for that price exactly, this, I don't quite understand some of the wording in here.
If we had all the figures, it might, it might work into play to where they can apply our figures to fix our sewer system, or water system, or streets. They could figure that all into a long-term goal, but...
Is it something where Jamie can call up this lady and ask her, "What did you need from us to go through with this plan?" And then Jamie tells us, "This is the stuff that we're going to have to take."
Somehow, I think a civil engineer is going to tell you once you're hiring, is going to charge you a lot more than masters in public administration.
Well, maybe you guys need to see what some other cities have done for a strategic plan. What a strategic plan looks like. Of our size and population and budget.
Because the ones that she's done for in here, much more.
That's exactly what I was, when I read this, I thought, we're looking at a plan, or we're dealing with somebody that wants to deal with a twenty thousand or a fifteen thousand population, that's when I was thinking, like, we were out of our league, maybe is the way.
See, and she, I mean, she, I discussed with her, like, our size, and, and the problem, the problem that I have with going, like, I know it's good to go to compare like this, like the city of the third class, like our, but just for, even for example, our community in Greensburg are roughly the same, are they still about twelve hundred?
Yeah.
But the, the difference, the differences in the communities are drastically different. Greensburg has, Greensburg has more, like, they always describe it as big city issues compared to what we're dealing with. I mean, they have, I mean, they have departments for everything, I feel like, down there.
Well, the other thing is, we need to start going that route. Different municipalities have different needs with the different budgets, and we do, as far as what they need to replace, what we need to replace.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I'm kind of wrong, but same way for Jen, uh, these people are going to tell us, or expend our money, that they don't know how much place going to cost, and it really doesn't help us at all. We need to know exactly what, uh, what we're, what it's going to cost in order for us to get these things done. When, without that, you're kind of running blind.
Yeah, I think if they could put all, everything we needed to fix in the city of St. John, together in a strategic plan for seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars, and lay it out on paper, black and white, for the next ten years, I don't think that's that expensive. But just to come in and tell us how to do it, without us knowing what we need. I don't know if I'm right, it's because they have money.
I don't know, I look what we need to, just...
Yeah, I'm, I'm not on board at all, but what everybody else was thinking.
What do you mean, you're not on board, like, with what part?
With using this company to come in and, and charge us seventeen thousand dollars for advice, that's, that's what I think that is. I think it's seventeen thousand dollars for us to be your big brother and give you good advice. That's what I think it is. How to think strategically. I don't want to pay somebody seventeen thousand dollars to tell me my streets are crap. We know it's working.
So you want somebody to come in here tactically, how do you think so? Strategically?
It just, I'm just not on board with it.
This whole thing did read like it was someone just, "Well, this is what you need." Well, we already know what we need.
Right.
We just need to know how we're going to do it, how much we're going to pay for it.
They're giving us advice on key, this is the way I read that, is they're giving us advice on key issues to think about and recognize, that I think half the points in there we're fully well aware of. And also, some of, some of the things, whether we think it's preventive maintenance or not, some of the things of redoing the entire sewer system, it's unobtainable. It's unobtainable, you guys, if you don't, that's, that's like taking the motor out of your high mileage pickup and rebuilding it when you don't have the pickup paid for. It's just not in budget, you guys, it's not going to work, it's never going to work, nobody does that unless you get, Greensburg gets wiped off the map, and as John says, you get a bunch of FEMA money, and I'm sure you can redo a lot of things. And that's how they jump into a new level of class ahead of us. There's probably no other city or town in the state that has the level of, uh...
I don't know, there's a lot of outside money that came into Greensburg.
So nobody that has there.
So another option could be more involvement from meetings. And that would include all of the department heads, council mayor, John, if you want to pay him.
One, one thing you could do is just ask, you know, and within each department, where are, have a rank of the problems, or they see, or they go business. And, and just start, start to compile, because they're the ones that deal with it all the time. Where are their number one issues?
Right.
That they, that they see, or, or the next...
And then them also maybe get the price of, because you guys are wanting numbers with that.
Can't fix something if you don't know what it costs. I mean, you can't, I don't know, do we have three blocks in this town of the sewer that just is barely home together, that definitely needs replaced? Do we have a mile of it, two miles of it, I don't know.
I thought you guys did that, that somebody went out on camera and looked at all that stuff?
Like, back in the eighties, I think.
Back in the eighties, and nothing's ever been done since then.
So we had a little image.
Well, and Jeff, Jeff's been working on it. And then Jason and I got together, um, and he, he showed us some of the major spots. But Jeff's still been in contact with, oh, I forgot the guy's name out of Manhattan.
I've watched some, I've watched some of the videos of there with Jeff, and there's some places that, uh, need some, need some care.
Yeah. But that, I, and, I mean, summertime has been really busy for them to be doing what they're doing and trying to stay on top of mowing and water repair.
I think if you look at some of the other cities that have replaced water lines, have done some work on their septic systems, septic sewers, like Great Mountain and stuff, this has been major projects that, that they've worked for blocks and blocks and blocks. I don't think that's, I don't know how that can ever be in our budget.
I don't think Jeff's...
I think you're just, I think you see a lot of difference once you get on your team, maybe just getting to play the sewers now, I think that's what fallen off of it.
But I, I thought you talked about lining it.
Yeah, we were talking about lining it, I'm not redoing it. Yeah.
Lining some of the old stuff to make it more cost effective.
So is this something that we do our own strategic plan with these guys at this table on Saturdays? Four or five meetings?
But, and, I mean...
I mean, that's, I, that's my opinion, let's, let's just pull these guys in, and we'll sit here at this table on the Saturdays. That's my opinion on it. I mean, they're, these guys know everything, but...
You got Dave, I can list my son's football games for Saturday games. I mean, until it's over, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, but if you're going to start it now, it's going to be about five weeks before it's, whatever.
I just think our strategic plan, this is what I think with our strategic plan, we had a plan to mill West Street until the concrete, and we didn't get it done. We need to have that be our strategic plan, we need to take baby steps and focus on getting done, what needs done, we, I mean, that we can, huh? I'm just, I mean, I'm just being realistic, we, we didn't even get our five or six blocks milled. That, that's what I, I mean, when I look at this, I think, man, I just want West Street milled, like, and plan was, and have chat going up West Street, that's all I want. I, I just think you got to be realistic on your goals, I don't know, maybe I'm out of line, I'm not putting anybody down.
That's where I was thinking, like, a year, year strategic plan would come into play.
You're, you're absolutely right, we need to take baby steps on a lot of this, because we really don't know which direction we need to go on a lot of the stuff. We need to take small steps, like you said, we didn't even get that finished.
I mean, it's, it's just...
But some of that sewer stuff, if you're paying the company to come in and reline it, or do it something like that, or bore it, you could plan on doing the worst parts and do it year by year, set aside so much money every year.
And that's what Jeff and I talked about doing it in like four or five days.
And that's part of the strategic plan of having it done throughout ten years, is you do, if you can only afford to do fifty thousand a year, you do the worst fifty thousand.
You're going to have to hour an outside contract.
Right, and some of that's going to have to be done anyway, because we don't have the manpower to do it. And we don't have the equipment to do it. Right. That's why the people get paid to do it. But if you don't ever have a cost, or, or what you want to spend per year, when it comes to budget time, if you don't figure it in, it's never going to get done. It's just like redoing the roads, if you don't figure in the material, you're not doing any roads that year, because you haven't prepared for it. Now, we've always done that every year, but it's not always been done every year.
So you guys okay with weekend deal? Have we discussed that on a later date, or what?
I don't have an issue with getting together.
I don't, there's a lot of things I'd rather be doing, but this is part of our job, we have to do it.
Or to not bring in... I mean, I don't really want our employees to have to give up their Saturday mornings, if they were to be able to work on it and gather the information, and then we can present it to you guys, and then if we have questions, we can bring them in. Because we're going to look into, paint everyone overtime, that's time away from their families, and that's just done. You guys are my family, so I'll, I'll be here.
I'd like to have the guys here, I mean, it's just like having them here right now, if we have a question, we get it within seconds. I know, it sucks.
But I get what Ross is saying, too, but, but I also feel like that's...
I, I want to know, if I'm getting told from somebody, and I don't make any offense to anybody, I want to know that they know.
Right.
I don't want to get told something because they think they know. I don't want, I don't want somebody to say, "We're pretty sure First Street Sewer's bad." I mean, we got to know, we got to do, you guys are going to have to have time, you can't tell me tomorrow, I don't think, of what sewer's the worst one in town. I mean, do we have that information, do we think, or what, what electrical's the worst one in town, I mean, do we know that right off the top of our head?
The sewer, the sewer, Jeff had a pretty good idea, and the main ones I'm looking at, of getting done, that I know that are halfway bad, but it's the ones under the buildings, the school and stuff, I'd love to see those done, because if, if those accidentally collapse under that school, or under these other buildings, it's not going to be done. And that's the...
And that's the main.
But is a liner going to prevent that?
From what I understand, yes. Looking at, uh, looking at what I've learned at these seminars and stuff, yeah. It, it, when they, when they put it in there, it just, it's like a cast that just grows out to fit that pipe, and it's a hard casting. And it keeps it from collapsing in.
I, I just want to know that the information, I guess, that we just know what we're dealing with for sure. That, that's all I say, I guess.
So you almost need to interview them, set up a Saturday or some other period of time that you just interview the department heads. And ask them, why, why is that the worst?
And they can, they can present for this, we're, we're prepared ahead of time and then do that.
Maybe we need to give them a month to get some stuff put together and then have a meeting and say, tell us what you know. Let's, and then we can just put it down. What's, what's the biggest priority? What's the least priority?
And I, I feel like our, our supervisors are just now kind of beating their feet wet with being able to.
That's why I want to give them time.
You know, Jeff, Jeff's.
Yeah.
A lap, you know, Jeff's letting go of some of his responsibilities and letting these two step up. And they're getting their feet wet on what needs to be done and how to do it and stuff like that. So that would also give them a good opportunity to continue that and step up and show what they can do with their departments.
But I think it also needs to not just be water, sewer, streets. It needs to be our equipment. I mean, everything needs to be brought to us. High loaders, dump trucks, pickups.
Truck lot.
Everything, buildings, you got buildings.
Well, if you look at your depreciation schedule on during, and treat it as a real expense, which it is, and capitalize that depreciation, then you end up being able to capitalize if you repurchase it. Anybody, Ross will testify in any of us have bought equipment. Capitalizing depreciation is extremely hard to do. It's if not impossible, but if you're not capitalizing depreciation, you're, we're losing money and the city's backing up. Because it's a real expense. Because when you replace it, it has an inflationary index and it's important.
I say, let them go to work on it. We'll talk to them next meeting. Thirty days, thirty days doesn't sound like long enough, in my opinion. I don't think that's enough time. I don't think that's fair to you guys. I, I think you, I, I honestly think you could have till the first year, it's just my opinion.
Well, here's the other issue we're going to run into is selection. So we're going to hit the first of the year, and then we're going to possibly have to be counseled.
Yeah, yeah, we can still bring it to us, but.
What, uh, how do we?
I, I'm just, the, the changes are what.
Sure. I was just wondering, how, how do you, how do you, just want us to give us a total cost of everything, or do you, do you guys want to give us a budget that we could work with?
I, I just want, I just, in my opinion, I just want to list the issues.
Okay.
I, I just want a list of the issues and then we can.
But the priority level.
And what you think the priority is and why, you know, and then we can dissect it from there and then go to the budget. This is my opinion.
Yeah, I think identifying the issues that we have and then just getting them from important to least important.
Obviously, we know we have an abundance of issues, but we're talking the top five in everybody's department of, of real issues affecting the functioning city. That's the way I look at it.
I think if you have something critical, that you know it's critical, you might find the cost.
Yeah, that, that's fair. If you think something that's been, that should have been done two, three, four, five years ago, that, that it can truly happen tomorrow, yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with that. Obviously, that's going to be number one.
Right.
Yep, something that's under a building, if we can fix it, that has to be done now.
And that First Year Impressions guy will be having, the next step is the town hall meeting, so I can bring all of your citizens' issues to light forty-two.
My opinion, I guess, on this is give these guys till the first meeting, the new council. And the, the next meeting after that person gets, people get put in, then we'll start discussing it then, and that gives these guys several months to get their list together, priorities. And when that new council will hit it, that gives these guys plenty of time to find their issues, priority levels.
It's a pretty big assignment for your first time council, if there are first time council members.
I got, I got thrown in with the police deal. I'm sure they can handle it.
General, you're part of it.
You are watching the tap dance on the table.
So is that something that we write down on here on old business or not with the date and strategic plan, just so they can see at each meeting and keep in mind that we don't forget or what?
You are clogging up mine, you are clogging up the mayor's.
I just want to be efficient. I don't want to forget. Doug, I guess while I'm at it, what's up with the new truck? We, the trade-in deal each year?
Well, I talked to him roughly two months ago. He said he'd call me with that. The body, the new body style was changing. He had four-drives, not two-er drives, that he could get available. As soon as he could get one available, he said, keep driving. He's not worried about it. Keep driving it. When it's available, call me, set it up, change it up.
No cost?
Still no cost. Uh, he told me two months ago.
I just forgot about that. Do you know about Ross?
No, I just, just from what I've.
Well, as I was saying, just saying simple things like that would forget about it.
I talked to him, put that on tape, just approved it.
I just, I want efficiency. When we discuss something, I want an answer to it at some point, is all.
It is a pretty big issue that if it does go too far and then it doesn't work, it's actually, can make us look pretty super, just saying. Just my opinion. I mean, if you can get a new one for five hundred bucks, the guy ought to be pushing to get the new one for five hundred bucks.
Yeah. Okay, any more discussion? All right, where we go with this thing right here, engine for power plant?
Yeah, I just left it on, under there.
Will we find anything out from Midwest bill?
No, Greg is coming to the meeting next. He could have come to this meeting, but maybe he'll be late.
Does he, does he have any info that you're aware of?
He didn't give me any information from him. And he never, unless he contacted Jeff about meeting, I was never aware of meeting with Midwest. So, but sometimes Jeff forgets himself.
On the power plant, where's your strategic plan? Ross isn't particularly aware, as I think everybody else is in business in this area isn't particularly aware, that whatever comes out of David Barfield's proposal will drastically impact the economic well-being of Stafford County, which is ground zero. And all you need to do is go to Great Banon, head west to Tribune, and look at the number of county schools. Look at the number of banks that have closed. If you do not study history, you're doomed to repeat it. And Barfield, at this point, has tried to repeat history and then totally destroyed the economic well-being of everyone in the Walnut River quarter. I talked to some people that are cautiously optimistic and some that are totally pessimistic about what's going to happen, but if his proposal goes down, there will be one school in the county. I would say that at least several, that one of the three of our highest users in utilities will not be here. And there will be a county wide school. And there will be a lot of young kids that leave that are going to find out that it's not an economic, if feasible, more than we do. And we will not be selling as much electricity as we are now, our heavy demand.
It will be an economic change. That's just like the strategic plan. That's an economic change nobody can complain for.
Yeah.
But we need to be aware of it, and I don't, I couldn't agree more. I'm very impressed with the stuff that he brought. I don't know what his name was, he brought this bond issue, but I don't, that's why I said, I don't think we're in any way, shape, or form we can be signing on that for at least another thirty days, find out if there's going to be whatever filed or.
Find out what the, what, what West Guard is going to do.
Oh, yeah, they canceled the meeting.
They canceled it? Okay. Did you ever find, oh, are you?
Nine hundred pages.
Nine hundred pages. That's the only way we can get a copy of their water permit.
I sent another email asking for the actual permit, because I don't, like, must have not been specific.
In my opinion, Divisional Water Resources is a little bit like a cat in a cat box. Because I've asked to get a copy of the water permit that Querera has. And, well, it's in this nine hundred page document.
I put in there.
My water permit, what's yours? Three pages?
Right, yeah, I know where you're going.
Somebody's covering up shit.
Well, I went to the, I went and requested it, and then they sent me a link and said, well, everything's online, so I clicked on that and it kept not loading. I'm like, what is going on?
Exactly.
And then it finally did, and it was nine hundred pages, and I'm just sitting there, oh, Jim. And I went through several of them.
Yeah, that's what they told me to. I went through it, and it's like nine hundred pages. I don't want nine hundred pages. I want to get, read their water permit.
Wouldn't it be, wouldn't you just go to District Court, look at Chad, look at Chad case? I'm sure it's, and maybe file as an exhibit in the case.
I don't think any of us still, regardless, anybody's ready to spend two quarters of a million dollars on the power plant.
I'm not either.
Not tonight, no.
I mean, they, the only bad thing is with the, I mean, how long is that guy going to keep the engine that's available?
He's never said he would hold it to begin. If he's just, he, he asked him to, but it's not a stay. It, we can know a lot more in thirty days than we might know a lot, we might not know anything more in six months.
Yeah.
But we shouldn't, we should know more in thirty days.
You'll know by the first of the year. Because everything they were proposing to implement takes effect January one.
GMD five asked for a stay of his order.
They did.
They did not give him because his order has not been implemented, but they wanted to look at.
Yeah.
I, I don't know.
There should be an update in the next week, ten days, from what I understand. But we were supposed to get an update last week and we didn't. In the cases.
I guess they wanted to cancel.
I don't know where it was, lost attention, I guess, I don't know. It's time to put it, it's, it's time to put it in writing. That's what they said.
If this hearing does ever come about, I would hope that our school superintendent shows up. At least somebody from city council shows up to voice propositions to what are economic impact. You know, for the irrigators to show up, you know, like, you and I are irrigators, but it, it firmly affects everybody else in this state. I don't know how, I don't know how anybody can plan at municipal level to even, because it will totally impact the tax base.
They just did a, like, a first in time, first in right, and started canceling. Water rights in order to meet the Querera's demand. You didn't have any irrigated wells that went along?
Well, I think the MDS wells are going to be.
No, the MDS wells come in, they're totally, I read the statute on MDS wells. And they will, since they're scattered all over the area, they will not have any impact upon the river flow. There are two water rights on the river, senior and down uphill from Querera. One of them is a vested water right to give water to Duck Pond, and the other one is older than Querera's. They're going to give water before Querera. The chief engineer rejected the Lima proposal, which is established by statute by the state government because he rejected the Lima, he didn't want it. So augmentation should provide water that's missing. Groundwater level has been replenished. The chief engineer has rejected science. I don't know if his mind's made up and there's no point confusing him with the facts. If he's got a personal agenda.
He just assumes everything's going to end up according to his.
Or.
Yeah, I think that's, I don't think there's any way but that.
Right.
They, they did an economic study. I can't, do you remember the dollar figure?
There's something, I can't, I see that.
One, one thirty, wasn't it? Or one fifty? One thirty or one fifty, is what he said. But also, correct, but they also said that that, that can easily be doubled for, for local consumption and production. It could be doubled. So, in fact, there was actually some criticism that it could actually triple to, but I don't know about that.
I mean, there, there's an incentive for those with vested or senior water rights to, to see it go to court. Like, that prevents any kind of agreement.
Yeah, I, I don't think the power plant is to be said by tonight, for sure.
I don't think we're going to play it, going out.
No.
But I do think we need to know about things that could, like you said, under their buildings, that those are things we can do, because that's critical.
I just, I just wonder if there's a way to make, Jason may know this, but to turn on the power plant, heat it up, and we need it, is there a way to make it easier for, applicable for you guys? Maybe if Jeff is not there, maybe he's on vacation or whatever, but, you know, he, he was talking about this new patent engine, making the operation, the startup, but a lot easier for anybody. Is there a way to do that with just the engines that are down, generators are down there right now?
Just with the one.
But.
Just with the one that they're, that's the easiest, but it won't pick up the whole town. That's why the other one hasn't come.
Sure, yeah. It's scary.
But you've got it down, right? See?
I'd sure like to know what Midwest says about our bill regardless as well.
I'd like to know about that too.
That's, that's kind of the whole, uh, where Jim's goes way more on the strategic plan, which is excellent, but the whole reason for doing this power plant is all the money we're saving for it, but yet we got hammered with it.
Eighty thousand dollar bill.
Yeah, eighty seven, eighty seven, eighty seven thousand dollar bill. Surely nice to understand why. I don't know if it's supposed to understand it. I don't. I'm the man, I can admit it, but I, somebody's understanding it.
But, but if that's a bill we're going to get, we're underfunded.
Right, obviously.
Way underfunded.
Scary.
Guess we'll figure it out next meeting when Greg's here, hopefully.
Hopefully so. Okay.
If anyone understands it, it better be him.
Yeah, you're right.
Sure as I hope so. Okay, we don't have any new business. We don't have executive session, uh, executive session.
Five minutes.
Five minutes, five minutes, uh, executive, executive session, person, so we have two, uh, non-elected personnel matters. Discuss employee performance, so what do we want in that?
All of you guys need to.
For how long?
Five minutes. Second. Okay, motion in second, all in favor? Motion carries. Uh, we resume at, uh, eight thirty-three. Calling me back to order. I haven't taken no action. Did I get a, uh, motion? Sigler.
If I make a motion to case in Sigler for a part five, a full time. Second.
No, motion in a second. All in favor? Motion carries. That being last of our order of business, I can give you a motion to adjourn.
So, uh.
Motion in a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.